Ready?
Ready?
Yep.
All right, if we can stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, one individual, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, we do have Commissioner Bretison on the line. When she speaks, her picture will come up on our screen here. Unfortunately, the cameras, we're having technical difficulties with it being blurry on teams. It is working on the broadcast properly, but on teams that our camera here looks blurry. Julie will be very clear.
All right.
Just as an FYI.
Thank you, Andrew. At this point, is there any public comment? That said, nothing? We'll move on to looking for a motion to accept the board meeting agenda.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Move by Beth, second by Steve. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, Andrew.
Yes, thank you. Uh, we have approval of the February twentieth board meeting minutes. Approval of Health and Human Services County and Hospital Accounts payable. Approval of the Cedar Mills Gun Club one to four day temporary on sale liquor license. And approval of a club liquor license for the Cedar Mills Gun Club. It's a renewal. That is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, motion by Paul.
I'll second.
Second by Steve. Any further discussion? Questions? None? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, I, Mr. Chair, because we have a member who's participating remotely, we do have to roll call votes.
Okay, roll call votes.
Which I missed in the agenda.
Have to do that on everything?
On every, on every vote.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretison?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. All right. Motion passes. Moving on, Anne. Feedlot Officer.
Hello, my name is Anne Steinhaus. I'm the Meeker County Feedlot Officer, and I'm here to get approval of my twenty twenty-three County Feedlot Officer Annual Report. And this covers the work that's required by our delegation, delegation agreement with the MPCA. There's additional work outs, or outside of the scope of this, but this is what's required for our grant. And I got an eleven out of eleven this year, so a hundred percent. Covers nineteen, or sorry, twenty-one inspections. And then various other, my trainings. What sites were inspected are also listed. And then the few performance credits that I got, and that was mostly for doing more inspections than the seven percent that that's required.
That was going to be my question, Anne, so you're required to do seven percent of the registered feedlots per year.
Yep.
And, yeah, you're roughly ten percent over a year.
Yes, and then I also do, um, so if you'll, if you notice where it says and, and number nine, feedlots with N, NPDES or SDS permits, those are the CAFOs. I also did seventeen of those, but I'm not allowed to count those. I do, those are state per view for seventy-twenty. But I do expect a good number of those every year to the county's, county CUP conditions. So I did the twenty-one inspections plus seventeen, so I actually did thirty-eight percent of Meeker Co-, or sorry, thirty-eight Meeker County Feedlots for fourteen percent.
And does that, um, let, in essence, do you cover every feedlot in the county? Every, you know, every so many years, or is it more of a random, or how, how is that?
It's more of a random. Um, because the CUP ones are required every year, those I-
Certain ones have to be.
Certain ones have to be, and that covers about half of the inspections I do annually.
Okay.
The other portion. I try to do at least five, I'm still hitting ones that have never been inspected.
Okay.
So I try to do five that have never been inspected annually. That's, that's written on my, and eventually I'll run out of those.
Okay.
The other batch, or-
Sure.
Ten to twelve are random. Some are people who, uh, certain loans require.
Oh, sure.
Inspection, so those, sometimes I do wellhead protection areas. Two years I, I, two of the, so this is my, I'm starting my sixth year, so two years I was requested to do certain wellhead protection areas, so they finished that, that portion. So it kind of depends on, on the focus annually that are given to me from groups within the county. Otherwise, I just go to the file drawer and start pulling.
Okay, I was wondering how this, what the system is, so it depends on permits that are pulled different. There's a lot of variables into what you inspect.
I, I, when I first started, I tried to come up with a very intelligent plan.
Then you realize you're working with a state.
Touche.
Pardon?
Soon discovered that sometimes you just had to go with the flow. So there's a plan, but oftentimes it gets, um, I, I call it getting lifed. Light comes in and we change the plan.
Yep.
So.
All right.
Mr. Chair? Anne, do, do we have a lot of feedlots that have never had an inspection?
I don't have a number. I know there are quite a few.
There are quite a few, and the size of those are various, right? The smaller ones and-
Mostly they're smaller, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Anne, just curious, it shows that you're basically two-thirds of full-time, or are you full-time? Just refresh my memory.
I am, I am full-time, but it's about two-thirds that my time is dedicated to feedlots. The other part of the time, I'm also the county ag inspector.
Okay.
So that's jokingly called the weed police. I'm the one who does, um, the noxious weed law enforcement. And then also we plant, I, I do other various SWCD functions. I monitor well depths, I help plant trees, I answer the phones. I mean, so that fills out that other third of my time.
Thank you. I, I thought that was the case, I just didn't, didn't recall, but yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chair? I move to approve the twenty twenty-three County Feedlot Financial Report and Feedlot Officer Annual Report.
All right, motion by Steve. Did I hear a second?
I will second that.
Second by Paul. Any further discussion? With that, we'll have the roll call vote.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretison?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. All right, with that said, motion pass. Thanks, Anne, keep up the good work and have fun with all the manure and weeds.
Any hurt, not so lovely.
Yeah.
Noxious.
Noxious weeds.
Noxious.
I don't like to call them manure noxious. I think there's a positive in that one. Yeah.
Morning, Greg Schultz, Land Use Director. I just got one item this morning that is an extension of CUP one six zero four nine. That's for Verizon. Cell phone tower in Kingston Township. This CUP was originally passed last April fourth, twenty twenty-four. They're looking for an extension. If you've read the Buell letter, they're the consultants for this project. The reason why they want the extension is, um, due to a number of details. Looks like including supply issues, um, could be weather, bandwidth, scheduling, budgetary constraints. They'd like to have this extension to be, normally we just do twelve months, but this one, this, they want eighteen months. Cause they don't even know exactly when this is going to be scheduled in twenty twenty-five. So we've extended this one in the past before too, and actually they've done a CUP in the past too. So this is about a, in about four years now, one works since the original CUP was issued for this one.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yep.
How much work would they have to do before they wouldn't need an extension? I'm just curious. It doesn't make any difference here, I'm just curious.
Both of them just started the project. They haven't even done anything to the land. Completely bare, bare slate. They haven't cleared the site or anything like that yet.
But had they done some of that?
I would say if they cleared the site and if they at least brought some equipment out there, some of the supplies, I think that's would be considered a start on the project.
Okay.
Does some, there's a, like, rising, do we know is that, like, um, I know a lot of times these projects get held up between, like, Verizon or, or, you know, and the federal government or different law changes and that pushes things back. Do we know any background on anything? We just know that they're-
Just know what was mentioned.
We don't know what the delay is.
Yeah. I think originally, when it came through, it was about in COVID time, I think it was supply issues at that time, the original one. That's why they let it expire and then reapply it for a CUP last year. Like, I remember the last reasoning was for that, the original one.
Okay.
Looks like it's getting bandwidth and other budget stuff and getting on the dock, and it's supposed to be construction crews. I suppose it's probably part of it as well, it sounds like.
This has been ongoing for a while.
Few years, yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, move to approve a request for an extension of a conditional use permit number one six zero four nine for a period of one year and six months from April fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll second, Mr. Chair. Motion by Paul, second by Beth. Any further discussion? The roll, Corey?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretison?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. All right. Motion pass. Thanks, Greg.
All right, do the day.
Mikel Johnson.
Morning.
Morning.
Mikel Johnson, Human Resources Coordinator. And what I have for you today is requesting to approve an employee referral program policy. So this would make the employee referral program more permanent than what it currently is. So back on February fifteenth of two thousand twenty-two, the board approved a resolution for an employee referral program. What, that one entailed was that if an applicant was hired, the current employee would receive two hundred dollars after the new hire completed ninety days of employment. And then an additional three hundred after the new hire completed their probation period, which is generally twelve months. During the first year of the program, um, over one-third of the employees that were hired were referred by current employees. So then that policy, or that resolution was extended again through February fifteenth of two thousand twenty-four. And since the start of that program, the county has hired sixteen employees who have indicated that they were referred by a current employee. Overall, the cost of the county for the program was, uh, five thousand dollars, which was a cost savings when we're not able to hire someone. So that's kind of where that has been offset. Uh, research has shown and our experience supports that new employees that come into the organization that have been referred by another current employee, um, have been more successful because they have already, they already know someone at the organization, so that helps them to onboard faster. It's more cost effective. They generally stay with the county longer as well. So the employee referral program policy is written to reflect the same language that was used in the resolution. The one change that is being proposed would be to provide the referring employee with the full five hundred dollars after the ninety days of employment have been completed versus splitting the amount on two different timelines. Um, and that's proposed just to help with administrative ease and that it, um, is a benefit to that referring employee that they get that right away. We also have not experienced that people have been leaving after that first ninety days. So that would be the, the change to that. So as this, we're seeing a lot of benefits from this. We'd be looking at implementing this as a policy.
Mr. Chair? Yep. Mikel, I, I, I'm glad it's working. It's good to see. I guess if it's working the way it is, I'm wondering why we want to go to ninety days to get the whole amount instead of, instead of just keeping it the way it is.
So it's more just an administrative ease so that they, that payroll doesn't have to go back and make sure that they're doing it in the two separate payments. Um, and making sure that after that twelve months, they're going back and doing that second amount. And also because we haven't really seen anyone that has left. We only had one employee that left between that ninety day and the twelve months, and that was due to relocation. It wasn't due to, to other reasons.
We, the other issue is, we're eliminating the hiring incentive with this. And we were doing the hiring incentive after ninety days and upon completion probation. So there was another, there was already a touch point that was occurring with payroll. Whereas with that piece going away, that's where the administrators, I think. The other piece of it is frankly, when we split the, the value between two hundred and three hundred dollars, when you get that first two hundred dollar payment and taxes are taken out and added on to your check.
Probably don't notice it.
You don't notice it as much, and so that, that value that comes along with it, I don't think is as great for the employee.
Sometimes I'm just kind of above the, you know, if it isn't broke, why monkey with it, but so we're no longer having the hiring.
Correct, yeah, the hiring incentive has expired.
That is expired when?
Expired at the end of last month. We, we had some discussions with department heads about it, and, and through the experience that we were seeing, there's not as many employers who are offering them anymore. And, um, while we have had, while we have found some value in some places with, with that program specifically, I don't think it's provided the enough value to continue on with it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Mikel, I don't know, I just, every week we see the new hire, welcome to Meeker County, so hiring has improved.
Uh, in certain areas, yes, in certain areas, we're still struggling. So where it's always those same areas that need that additional licensing, education, certification, all of those are areas that we still struggle in.
Can you be more specific?
Sure, so Assistant County Attorney is Public Health, we're finally full, um, but we still really struggle in those areas. Heavy equipment operators, we're still struggling in those areas. We've been fairly fortunate with social workers, but we've had basically just enough applicants and, you know, just getting lucky honestly with getting the right candidates. But we're not seeing a lot of candidates for those, you know, we're getting anywhere between three and five candidates for an opening for those, and we just are getting less enough that we have that person that can fill it, but even those, we're not releasing a lot.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the employee referral program policy.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
By Paul, second by Steve. One question, it, it says it costs us five thousand, but just doing a quick math, five times sixteen, isn't it eight thousand?
It, it's cost five thousand to date.
Okay, so there was some of that in the back.
Because some of the payments are still outstanding.
Okay.
Government, government addition.
Government addition. All right.
Kidding.
Oh, I like my pocket math better.
Any other questions? With that said, can we have a roll?
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretison?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mikel.
Yes, thank you.
Up next, Andrew Letson, County Administrator.
Uh, so this first item is a follow-up to our discussion at the last work session, uh, and frankly, our work session back in October as well. We, um, have been talking about the impact of publicly owned properties on, on the tax base across the county. And, um, what we found through our analysis is that the amount that is paid by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for, um, their revenue sharing program, they call it, um, does not equal what would be paid by property taxes. So in doing some further research after our last meeting, um, thanks to the, the folks from U.S. Fish and Wildlife who came to share some information with us about it. The authority for money coming from these lands to local governments comes from the Refuge, Refuge Revenue Sharing Act, which was amended in nineteen seventy-eight. That amendment allowed Congress to be able to provide money to cover any, um, any loss due to the fact that certain properties are not generating revenues. What we have found though is that Congress has not appropriated enough money for this. So what we would do with this resolution if approved is provide it to our congressional delegation. Representative Fishbach and the two senators, Clovish and Smith, uh, to make them aware of this issue and seek their advocacy on it as the, as Congress goes through their budgeting process. So with that, I'm going for any questions.
Mr. Chair? Andrew, is there other counties? Did you base this on some other counties' resolutions, or did you?
Um, no, this is not based on other county resolutions. This is an issue that, um, you know, uh, pro, providing adequate payments to, you know, cover local costs of services is something that NACO has taken on. NACO is the National Association of Counties. That's an issue that they've, have on their platform, and so, um, we know that it's an issue nationally that they're looking at. But this isn't an issue that specifically we've had conversations with other counties with, but if adopted by the board, we would share this with our, our neighboring partners.
Thank you. Paul?
Kind of answered the question.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve a resolution regarding revenue sharing payments for lands owned by the United States Fish and Wildlife Service.
Motion by Steve. Looking for a second.
I will second that.
Second by Paul. Any further discussion? With that said, it's a resolution, so keep going on the roll call.
Commissioner Bretison?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. With that said, motion carries. Moving on. Number B, rescinding the contract.
So, um, if you recall back in, on September twenty-sixth, when the boards approved all of the construction contracts for the remodel project, one of them was for category nineteen, which was the elevator that's going to be installed in the new entrance that connects the, the jail to the courts. TK Elevator Corporation was the sole bidder on that project, um, or on that contract. After we went through that award process, um, Contegy was continuing conversations with TK, and what was discovered was that their bid did not include a remote connection to the, um, the jail board to allow for remote operation of the elevator, uh, which is necessary. You know, we don't want, uh, folks who are in the elevator to be able to operate it. We want someone else to be able to operate it for them. Contegy and WOLD were having conversations with TK Elevator, um, who indicated that this is not something they can provide in one of their standard solutions. So they would need to provide a, a custom solution, which they estimated the total price would go up over two hundred thousand dollars. Their bid was a hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. As a result of that, um, you know, working with, uh, WOLD and Contegy, um, asked them to go and get quotes from other vendors. They received a quote from Schumacher Elevator Company and a, um, a cost estimate from Otis Elevator. Schumacher Elevator Company is out of Iowa. They were able to provide, um, a, a quote for a hundred and fifty-seven, eight hundred, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, which meets the technical specification. So it's a four thousand dollar increase from what we had originally awarded. But it meets what we need to do, and it is less expensive than the other, um, options that were out there for us. With that, uh, what we'll be looking for today is a motion to rescind the award of the contract to TK Elevator Corporation. Contract was not executed, uh, but just, we need to rescind the award. And then the second is, uh, award a contract to Schumacher Elevator.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Paul? Apples to apples, Otis was almost twice as much money.
It was, yes. And again, they were looking at another custom solution as well. One of the benefits of, of Schumacher is, um, they, their equipment is not proprietary. So once we get through our warranty period, the company that we use to maintain our other elevators are going to be able to maintain this one as well, whereas TK and Otis are both proprietary.
Well, this sounds like a, a better solution overall.
It is.
I mean, boy, I'm reading this.
And, and this is, this is an issue that both the architects from WOLD and our construction managers at Contegy have worked, um, pretty hard on to make sure that we're getting the right solution.
Only a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollar difference.
I'm surprised you only got one, four thousand more to actually get everything.
Yeah, when I, when I got the initial call from Larry from Contegy and said, we're expecting this to be about a sixty thousand dollar swing, I, I about dropped my phone, so I was very happy that they were able to come up with a much better solution for us.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'll move to rescind the award of the contract to TK Elevator Corporation for category nineteen of the facility remodel project and award a contract to Schumacher Elevator Company for category nineteen of the, of the facilitator remodel project.
Motion by Steve?
I'll second that.
Second by Julie. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretison?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes. Motion carries. Onto appointing Commissioner to Department of Corrections Advisory Committee. Andrew again.
Yes, so, um, Department of Corrections provided, as I'm sure you're aware, the Department of Corrections received, um, a lot of additional funding for probation services as part of the last legislative session. As a result of that, they are, uh, being asked to put together comprehensive plans of basically how they're going to use that money, uh, and how they're providing probation services across the state. So we had a meeting last week with our, our area supervisor, um, along with a number of other local partners and to discuss that plan. There were, um, a, a number of comments that came out of that, and, and ultimately what was determined is that, we should follow model the other counties have had, which is set up an advisory group to discuss probation services. Um, not just with this plan, but, you know, in a, in a longer term, um, discussions. So the committee's going to consist of a number of folks from the, uh, the criminal justice side, um, my office, and then we're looking for a county commissioner to serve on it as well, so I'm looking for a volunteer.
Mr. Chair? Steve, this is kind of in your wheelhouse, being public safety at MRC, is this of any interest?
AMC. No, but, uh, and I actually sat on the policy task group, work group that we put together last, last summer on Department of Corrections. So, yeah, I'd be interested. I'd be that volunteer.
I make a motion to appoint volunteer Schmidt to the Department of Corrections Advisory Committee.
I will second that.
Motion by Beth to, Steve is a volunteer, second by Paul. Any further discussion? Roll call on this one?
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretison?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Enthusiastically, yes. Motion carries? And then we're down to, what's that?
I'm looking at her, I said it could have been you.
Yeah, I know, that's why I'm very enthusiastic about it. All right. With that, we're down to number D, discuss changes to county board protocol. Andrew again.
Um, so we had an interesting meeting in our last meeting, and I think that it provides an opportunity for us to take a step back and, um, take a look at the, the board protocol, that, the operating procedures that we have in place already. The existing procedures were, uh, were developed in two thousand and eleven, and as you, I'm sure, read the document in the packet, primarily focuses on public participation and how the public, um, can get items on the agenda, as well as a couple of other things that, as I read it, were to address specific concerns at the time. Last year, AMC did a project where they took a look at operating manuals from across the state and put together a, a guidebook with some, some best practices and some examples of what other counties have done. So I see this as a good opportunity for us to, um, to do that as well and kind of codify some of the, um, the things of how we, um, have discussions, how we have disagreements and do so in a respectful manner and, um, and be able to come to good, um, decisions, good conclusions at the end. So my suggestion is that we look to update this, um, this protocol and do so with a, a committee of two commissioners and myself. And, uh, for those of you who would serve on it, if you're interested in doing this, I will do the work of drafting it. You don't have to do that part, but I would like your feedback and what you would like to have in there, and then we bring it back for further discussion, uh, and approval by the board. And, um, my conversations, my conversation with Commissioner Bretison prior to this meeting, she indicated she would have an interest in that, but open it up for further discussion.
All right, thanks for all that detail, Andrew, and I'm sure we all read through the board packet, looking at all the procedures. So is there, uh, any recommendations for commissioners to be on this committee then?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
And this is because of, uh, Commissioner Schmidt and Commissioner Johnson's, um, they, they attend AMC a lot. And I don't. I go once in a while, so I think it's important because of the partnerships they form down there and the ideas and the meetings they go down there, that they would be the two that serve on the board protocol and public partition. Just say it, policy committee. So I would make the motion that Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Schmidt would serve with Andrew on that committee.
All right, that's it, Beth.
And by the way, this was really, I, I'm just going to tell you, there was a lot of information in here.
Yes, it is all.
I didn't come to any, uh, conclusions about anything. I think you have your work cut out for you. So that's my motion.
All right, Beth makes a motion. Is there a second? All right, Beth makes a motion, is there a second?
I don't like seconding something where I'm a part of the motion.
Uh, then I will second that motion. Any further discussion? With that said, can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Olberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Enthusiastically, yes. Motion carries? And that moves on to administrator's report?
Yes, I have just a couple of items for you on the administrator's report. Um, both of which are, are legislative updates, I'm sure you saw in the AMC update that came out this week that the, uh, February forecast showed the state's surplus has increased to three point seven billion dollars, I think two and a half billion. However, it also still estimates that by FY twenty-six, twenty-seven, there's a, um, a shortfall due to a structural imbalance of, of more expenses than revenues. Um, one issue that, uh, is of significant concern to the county continues to be the tax forfeiture issue. As you recall, uh, the, the counties or the state lost in the Supreme Court case last year of Hennepin versus Tyler, uh, where our tax forfeiture law was found to be unconstitutional, and we need to go back and, uh, the state needs to go back and rewrite that one. AMC's has a working group where they're putting together both the policy piece of it, but then the other side is other property owners who've had, um, their properties lawsuits, tax forfeiture, and then sold, have an interest in, um, suing counties to, to make, to get back that excess revenue that was collected. So there has been a, um, a class action lawsuit that's been ongoing and has, um, you know, my understanding is nearing a settlement. Statewide, the estimated total cost is expect- anticipated to be a hundred and nine million dollars. Based on the, um, the run that I saw on Friday of last week, Meeker County would be responsible for about a half a million dollars of that. Um, that would be split between the county and the other taxing districts, so on average, you know, when we look at what our tax bill is compared to the others, we're about forty-five to forty-eight percent of the total tax bill, so estimated about a quarter million dollars the county would need to find to cover that. Now, each individual would need to make claims, and, um, so that's a, that's a total maximum liability that's out there. Um, and, uh, so, but either way, there is a, um, a bill that's gonna come forward to have the state cover the cost. All counties were doing was following state law, it was the state's law that was overturned, not the county's law that was overturned, so that's the, um, that's the argument that's being made. Um, unfortunately, it's not an issue that drives people to the polls, and so, um, it's, there's concern that the legislature may not wanna take up this cost. But when the bill does drop, um, I'll share that information with you, and we're gonna wanna have to reach out to our local delegation to remind them of the fact that, you know, it was the state's law that was overturned, not the county's, that this will have a direct property tax impact on, on their taxpayers, um, and the county, the state just found another one point two billion dollars in surplus, so.
Mister Chair. Question, Andrew, um, you said they would have to file for it?
Yes.
So, we're not required to send out an notice?
No.
Of any type?
No, the, uh, my understanding of the rough outline of the settlement is that there's a certain percentage that goes towards attorney's fees to cover the, the, the defense attorneys on this case, and then they would also receive a percentage, a relatively nominal percentage of the claims that are collected, so they have an incentive to go out and find these folks, um, so. But no, we would not be, my understanding is we would not be reluctant to.
I would.
So not great news.
Well, in, in many of these cases though, too, there, either there is no failure, there's, you know, there's usually extenuating circumstances behind us, so I mean, tracking somebody down could be quite an arduous task.
They'll best, they'll, they'll come right forward with their hand up.
I mean, it's good that it's not in our hands, to track it down is what I'm saying, but.
Yeah.
Well, I agree with that, but about a quarter of a million dollars, is that what you said we would?
Yeah. Yeah.
So is that, so this is properties that we've taken and sold? And then how do, how do they come up, so they're saying it was valued at no matter what we got for it?
No, I believe it's based, I believe it's based on the actual sale price versus the taxes that were up.
Because a lot of times, I mean, we sold buildings for five hundred dollars, don't tell me.
No, you're absolutely right, you're absolutely right.
But it's still coming.
There's a, there's a handful of properties that, that really drive this, right? So, um, you know, you look at the half a million dollars total, while the property that was, we sold in Grove City last year had a net profit of thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And what concerns me is the hit that the other taxing districts are gonna have to take, too.
They what?
The, that, hit that other taxing districts are gonna have to take, the townships, the cities, the school districts.
School district.
Yeah, 'cause we would have to claw that back as we have with the, um, um, the utility, uh, the state, the state assessed utility companies that have had the tax wins.
So if this would get into court, would it? I feel like we should have a, a, a good argument, a good argument, because we were doing what we were told by the state of Minnesota, correct?
It's already in court, and that's where they're coming up with a settlement, is they're saying, all right, the Supreme Court is already, is it the Supreme Court in court of?
So, so we don't appeal that, we, there'll be no appeal.
It's kind of already been determined that the counties took too much from these forfeit properties, when really the, so it was a gain for the counties instead of just paying the overdue taxes, so they're saying that it wasn't.
So there's no appeal process for us?
They already went through that process.
That's, but, oh, they glossed.
And that's what.
That, that was what the Supreme Court ruled, nine oh against us.
So that's the Tyler, Swartler, DeMar.
Got it, okay, I didn't understand that part.
Yeah, so that's where we are now, is we're looking at a settlement, looks like they just came up with a settlement terms, but it's contingent upon the funding coming from the state, so.
Okay.
I don't think any of the counties are supportive of it coming back onto
No.
countywide tax base, but there is really nothing else we can do at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And we need a law fix to make sure that we have an accurate process to be able to go through and explain what do we do. Department of Revenue is saying we still have an obligation to move forward with forfeit properties, and we also as a county have an obligation to make sure that the forfeit properties are not in a condition that is, um,
Dangerous.
Yes, dangerous to the public, so we're gonna have to put money into these properties to make sure that they're safe, but that's where Barb usually, our auditor, would say, hey, let's move this property off so that we don't have the liability of maintaining and the structures are dilapidated.
So right now, we're still on unconstitutional law that we're following?
Yes.
And then, and it's all based on the state, 'cause we're just following the state statutes?
Yeah.
What do we do as a county next? Is there anything we can do to, in terms of like lobby the state to say, hey?
Yeah.
You guys, I mean, as a county board, is there anything we can do to say, hey, state, you, we were just following the law that you guys put on the books? We want that difference.
So, um, so.
That's what I'm assuming you kind of brought it up.
There's two tracks that are going on here, one is the, the policy piece of how do we manage tax forfeits going forward? And the other is the payment of these outstanding claims. Um, both of which are, are AMC priorities, and there are things that AMC is working on. Uh, I'm bringing this to your attention today so that when the bill does come up and we're at a point where we wanna do some advocacy, you're aware of it and, um, and that you're ready to apply that.
It, it, help me out here, Steve, but was that not a discussion by one of the two, um, representatives that addressed MRC on that first day of the AMC legislative? Didn't they say the?
Yes, that was discussed.
So they're very aware of what we want?
Yes, so.
Everybody's very aware of the issue, that's, they haven't come up with a.
Right.
They haven't rectified a solution.
It, it, the big question, I think, is will the settlement make you cross the finish line at the end of the session, so.
Gotcha, so right now it's an AMC issue?
Yep.
That they're trying to work, obviously.
Yep.
Yep, so, all right. Any other questions for Andrew?
That's your report. That is my report.
All right, segue right into Board of Commissioners' committee update. We'll go with our remote, uh, partner in crime, Julie, if you wanna start off.
Woo hoo, give me a minute here, see if I can pull up my little piece of paper here on my computer, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Let's see, today, our last reports were given on the twentieth. That afternoon of February twentieth, Danny and I had the University of Minnesota Extension meeting. We welcomed two new members to the board, Leann Lund and Matthew Johnson. We thanked them for their willingness to serve. And our new chair for twenty twenty-four will be Corey Servin with Jennifer Welling, she's the vice chair, so that was good. We discussed who will serve on various committees and everyone was happy to stay in their current assignment. Uh, the budget looked wonderful, ninety-seven percent was the final amount for the year, so they came in under budget. We viewed a beautiful presentation about the extension programs, and that was given by the regional director, and that was very nice. And the Meeker in Motion Program is flourishing, and Tim Erickson gave a very enthusiastic report of the participation and interest in that leadership opportunity. Um, then we heard from the four H educator, the three Ag educators' reports, and it was just a nice note. I was impressed, there were ninety-five, ninety-five new four Hers who joined clubs in Meeker County last year. That was just awesome. And then Thursday, February twenty-second, my husband and I attended the Farm Transfer Estate Planning Workshop, which was sponsored by the University of Minnesota Extension. It was held in the Saint Philip Church Social Hall, and it, it was just excellent. We have such a wonderful extension program in Meeker County, I can't encourage people enough to just go to your computer and type in U of M extension. And there's jobs, jobs of workshops and tr- in, available, um, then, then we had Tuesday, our work session in boardroom, and that's it for my report.
All right, thank you, Julie, we'll move on to.
Very glad you were getting mail now, too.
I'd, I would, Mister Chair, I'd just add that, and you mentioned Matt Johnson, and I think Matt will be a great addition as well, Corey Servin, too, uh, Corey's in the Minnesota Ag and Rural Leadership Course, I think he's just about finishing up, and Matt has been, he's a Meeker County Farm Bureau, uh, president, and he's been very active there and done a great job in leadership there, so there were just a couple names that I know of that, uh, do a lot of good work outside of, uh, extension and, and in the fair and different things, so them couple names I recognize will be great additions.
Thanks, Steve, why don't you just go ahead and do your.
All right. All right, uh, since last week, basically AMC was, uh, we had from Tuesday the twentieth till Thursday afternoon, started out an MRC meeting at the, the night of the twentieth, Tuesday the twentieth, and, um, and then finished up after, after the legislative conference with, uh, AMC in the afternoon of Thursday. Um, one of the biggest things that was talked about again yesterday on MRC is the sanctuary state language, and actually, um, AMC did bring, uh, amendment to the agenda to discuss it and put forth, uh, uh, a resolution on, on that topic, and everybody in the room basically recognizes that it's just bad policy and that it, um, it creates a lot of, uh, conversation and angst between counties, and it, it also adds fuel to that metro rural county conversation, but interesting thing in that meeting was, you know, Ramsey County was in there and the, and the AMC meeting, and they're, they said, despite what you read, we do not want this. You know, they said that we can't handle and take care of the folks that we have right now. Um, you know, we don't have the facilities, we don't have the dollars, we don't have the resources on any aspect, so we don't want this. Um, and so, so that was actually, uh, a good conversation to have, and then yesterday in MRC, it got brought up again at the end of the meeting, and one thing I forgot to bring up, and I, I talked to Doug Kruger from McLeod and to Luke Johnson, the chair of, uh, from Pipestone of MRC yesterday afternoon, and one thing I forgot to bring up in that meeting, uh, in my comments, was that AMC did, uh, another thing we're doing is putting together a, a task force or a work group just for immigration and to have, so we monitor stuff that's going on at the legislature, and I think that would've helped ease some of the conversation yesterday in MRC, um, just that there are, we are gonna watch it, and I didn't, I just brought up the fact that we should, uh, um, be collaborating between MRC and AMC to keep your finger on the pulse and, 'cause it really, there isn't, uh, to me, it's a lot of hot button language that gets people stirred up, and there is no support for it, but then it starts splitting counties up, and that's actually not good for us as counties, and it, and there is no benefit that way, so we need to try and take a more unified approach and, and monitor it and tell them that it's, just quit playing the, you know, the verbal acrobatics with us and, and give us something. If, if you're gonna make political, uh, issues on election year, uh, leave us out of it, that was pretty much what came out of that, but. Other than that, I Grove City Care, um, on Monday, the twenty-sixth, um, they had their Super Bowl, and they served about a hundred and fifteen people and made about eleven hundred dollars, they do, uh, uh, have on Wednesday, March twentieth, from nine to eleven-thirty at the Trinity Lutheran Church, they're going to have a senior health expo, um, sponsored by Grove City Care, and this is where Ekumen and a lot of other vendors come in, and people can come in, it's just a community health fair. Um, so you can go and meet with, uh, people, you know, foot care clinics and, and the different things, they offer a little, you know, continental breakfast and some door prizes and stuff, and I think they had about fifteen to twenty vendors, if I remember correctly, in the past, so. So that's coming up on the March twentieth, and then, uh, we had our work session on the twenty-seventh, and that, oh, and then MRC yesterday, so, yesterday morning, so, um, oh, and then the, the other thing MRC I thought was, it sounds like there's a lot of support for Karma, I'll maybe let you, I'll let you address that, but, uh, Paul, so, that's all I got.
All right, thanks, Steve, we'll just go right into Paul.
Okay, uh, after our last commissioner work session, uh, Steve and I took advantage of an offer by Andrew to go take a look at the family services remodel, and I encourage you all to do it because it really is coming together beautifully. Um, when we took our tour, of course, we saw a lot of sheet rock and painted walls, but nothing organized. Uh, a lot of them, the folks working over there now have their desks and their new workstations. Um, I asked a couple of them, what do you think? We, we love it, we're getting used to it, and we're really liking it, so, uh, it was really pleasant to hear, and, um, they've got a lot of privacy, you know, for an open room, it, when we looked at it, I thought, boy, this isn't very big. Now, when I saw it with the furniture in, looked entirely different. Uh, there's a lot of space there, and they do have the privacy I think they need, so that was a tour well worth it, Andrew, uh, thank you.
How is that coming in terms of, uh, timeline, are we right on track?
Yeah, we're on, far on schedule, they're starting Phase B yesterday, um, and then that is expected to be done around mid-May, getting folks moved into there around Memorial Day, and then, um, get started on the annex right after that, and then the next, they're gonna start here on the entrance, is, um, tentatively around mid-April, um, and then be done with that by end of September, um, with the goal of being done with that prior to early voting, starting for the general election in the fall, so.
That's a great start.
Yes.
Save the bottom line, too, if we keep it up, so, all right, sorry, Paul.
And Steve and I and Andrew were, uh, in, in Minneapolis for AMC, or in Saint Paul for AMC, uh, we had really, I thought, really good meetings with representatives, uh, Senator Anderson, who has just such a small portion of Meeker up in that northeast quadrant.
But an important portion, very important.
Important, but, but a smaller portion than, than our others. Um, he was very interested in what we had to say, he was taking notes, uh, fascinating gentleman, really is, uh, he's got quite a history, doesn't he, of, of things, but, uh, we then met with Don Gilman, um, and once again, we had a really good meeting, uh, I was focusing on Karma, uh, you know, I let those guys, the, the county administered rural medical assistance. Uh, I was focusing on karma. Uh, you know, I let those guys, the, the county administered rural medical assistance. And so I was kinda, uh, that was my little niche in this, and I was pushing that very, very hard. And it was, uh, Dawn, once again, um, she has a relationship with our emergency, uh, doctor out here, Dr. Sands. So, um, a good understanding and a good interest in what was coming there. Uh, and then we met with Dean Erdall, and of course, uh, he was a, a supporter of Prime West, uh, and has always, and said he is going to continue to support, uh, karma because it affects Prime West, so that was good. Um, then we had a C, CPT meeting, counties providing technology. Uh, that was kind of an organizational meeting as we firmed up some committees and, um, looked at the expenses and created a budget committee. Uh, we will look at potential paybacks to the counties later this year. I don't know if it's gonna happen or not, but, um, our balance sheet continues to grow, so, uh, we're in a good position there. Uh, yesterday, uh, Steve referred to MRC and, and, um, I, I just can't say enough about Huffman and, and Representatives Huffman and Fisher. Yes, they introduced the bill, um, but, uh, so well informed about it. I mean, I think they could have spoke to any issue there was. They, they answered the questions that were asked of them and not just a little bit of lip service. It was deep. They could go into it, and so, uh, that was very positive, uh, to hear that. Uh, that particular bill does have bipartisan, uh, support and is looking like, it's got a good chance of moving through in this session and getting to the finish line, so we hope that that will. Yeah, there was a lot of other discussion and, and, uh, like Steve said, you know, there's always that attempt to fragment, do piece here, piece here, piece here. Well, what are, how many bills have been introduced, did he say?
This year?
Yeah.
Well, there was sixty-five hundred last year. I think there.
We're coming up to five thousand, five thousand.
And so what do we have? Three people monitoring five thousand bills? So we can't fragment them off. We gotta stay, in my opinion, is we gotta stay to the platform that we set for MRC, and we gotta stay the course and not do this, or we're really gonna have a, well, effectively get nothing done, so. That's about it for me.
All right. Thanks, Paul. Beth?
So I didn't have much. I had the shelter meeting, um, on the twenty-second. Now, they're con- continuing, uh, to look for money. Their, the income is down, operating is up. Actually, last month, the operating was down a little. Um, adoptions are down. People are dropping animals off and, uh, at the door, so you don't get much out of that. There were, there's some owner surrenders, uh, that I've discussed before where, um, if they need a dog euthanized, say, for Meeker County, we will not pick that dog up because the runs aren't. If it's a dangerous dog, the runs aren't, they're too long. So apparently there was some dispute about one a couple of weeks ago, and I'll, I'll address it, but I'll talk to you about it after, Andrew, but the best, if anybody's listening, if you have a dangerous dog and you have to have it euthanized at the shelter, the best thing you can do is bring it yourself so they can muzzle it and, and euthanize it in a humane manner. So, um, there's a lot of pit bull mixes. People are raising pit bulls, started, and of course, no. They're not puppies anymore, and so it's, it's an issue. So we continue, we continue needing funding. So if anybody has some extra dollars later, don't be afraid to give it to the shelter. That's the only meeting I had, actually.
I had the extension meeting with Julie, um, uh, I'm on the budget committee. Julie's on the Farm Family of the Year award, so anybody think there's possible candidates for that? Let us know for Farm Family of the Year. And, um, then we have class and comp right after this one, I believe, right, Andrew?
Yeah, it's gonna be at ten thirty.
Okay. Yep. And with that said, I'd just like to say thoughts and prayers out to Paul Bukovich after his accident. Hopefully he has a full recovery, but, uh, it sounds like things are coming along, but just wanted to send that out to Paul.
Mister Chair, if I could have one more?
Yep.
Uh, just a reminder that on March twenty-second, Lamp has a bingo, and it supports all of the youth in Meeker County. So, um, something you might be interested in. If not, you might know somebody who is, but it's a great fundraiser for Lamp.
Also, if you've got the Litchfield paper last week, you'll notice, uh, CCT's van was delivered over to, uh, over to the, to the shop over there, and there was, I think there was some pictures online.
Online, there were.
From the eighty thousand donation, dollar donation from Prime West for volunteer drivers, which is, is gonna make a huge difference to, to people, so we thank them for that.
All right. Yeah, with that said.
You need Mister Chair? Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you.